Michelle.
It's me, it's. Sorry, I'm logged in.
You have a village of Cold Springs. Are you on the other village?
It's a long, it's a long story. Me and Jeff are. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm logged into the account, that's why.
Just adjust volume here. I was tapping in some final notes. Ready to roll? How many people do we have in the waiting room, Jeff?
Um, nine, 10 people.
Let's do it. Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Okay, so, welcome to the February twenty twenty-two monthly meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. Long agenda tonight, but good stuff coming up. I would ask the clerk to do a roll call, please. You're muted, Jeff.
Bear Foley. Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Curdo.
Yep.
Trustee Fadé.
Here.
And trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Thank you. The first is the opportunity to request a vote to add agenda items. I believe that trustee Curdo has a request for a modification, so we'll begin with that.
Yeah, if I could make a request that we pull and defer item nineteen, which is the resolution for the garbage and recycling bid till next week. Reason being, we had a long conversation with our attorney yesterday. We got back the comments to the agreements this evening at five thirty. They haven't gone to Royal's attorney yet, so rather than us put a resolution forward, Kathleen and I spoke and thought along with our attorney, it's best to just do this hundred percent the correct way. And let's defer it to next week. Let's let lawyers speak. If we have to speak again, we can, and then the next day or so, everybody will get a brand-new clean copy of the agreement that they can actually read. Right now, we're all kind of looking at these redline things, and since I'm kind of older than a lot of you guys, I can't read those stuff. But, so that's what the thought process was. Rather than try to ram this through, this is a fairly significant contract in value.
Agreed.
Let's just push it to next week. Let's just dot all the i's, cross the t's, and everybody feel a hundred percent comfortable with what they're going to approve or not approve. And just just do it the right way.
Everyone good with that?
Yep. Thank you.
And we have deputy supervisor Bob Flaherty with us tonight from the town of Phillips Town. He has another engagement, another, his own board engagement this evening, and so has asked to come up higher on the agenda. So we'll take the report from Phillips Town first, and I think Bob is going to give us some additional information following on last week's discussion of recycling. So, welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Let me go first here. I'm sorry.
Hold on for a second. We really should do a board vote.
On the previous, on modified?
Yep.
Thank you, Jeff.
Motion to table?
Yes, the motion to table. Jeff, Joe, Joe, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, make a motion to table. Resolution O two dash two oh two two, accepting refuse and recycling bid from Royal carding. Till next week.
So moved.
Second? I, I will second no one else's second, all in favor?
I.
I, okay, great. That was the Columbia's, Columbus's motion and all time. Go ahead, Bob, sorry.
All right, I appreciate it. Let me go on first too, but I appreciate it very much. Our new highway to garage, the dry well, wells have been installed, all the necessary piping was installed as well. These dry wells are underneath the actual concrete floor of, of the trucks. This is an environmental requirement. When we clean the trucks off and everything like from the salt and dirt and so forth like that, that all needs to be captured and collected into these tanks. And there's sediment there that we can take out as, as necessary, but the water really will drain back into earth as, as slowly as it, as it needs to be. So that's all in place. We also have the side and front walls were formed in port brick concrete. The, the building on it fortunately isn't expected to come until May with all the delays in shipping and everything else, spy chains, that's what, that's what they're telling us. I wish they, they should have told us months ago about this. Anyway, so with that going on, we got also our, oh, we're thinking about shutting the project down for a little while. There's really not a lot of work that can be done over the next several months, so we'll make that determination on next Wednesday's call if we're going to do that. It's really not a lot of work that can be done at this particular time. Also, our highway superintendent Carl hasn't been far and well. He was in hospital for a little while. He's home now, so I just want to let, you know, give him a speedy, hopefully he has a speed of recovery and he'll be fine. I did speak to him the other day. He sounded good, so hopefully he's on the mend. We passed two intermunicipal agreements with you. Well, one for mutual aid for the winter snows removal. If you need our help, we were there to help you. I understand we did sue some sanding and, and salping of one, one of the storms last week. And the other ones for the F, forward F one fifty plow and sand. Putnam County Sheriff McCombe and under sheriff addressed the board last week. They're coming up with a new communications plan. They're going to be using texting and so forth. Yeah, the email and they want to get communications out to everybody. I don't know if, has he spoken to you, to you at all?
Not yet. I, I hope that he will come before our board and, and share some of that with us as well.
He, he mentioned that. He's just, he's, you know, he's taking his rounds.
Rounds, yeah.
Yes. So anyway, that was a good thing. I did receive a text just the other day as a test, and I did get it, so it should be good.
Thank you.
We also discussed food scrap recycling. That's something we're looking into. Scarsdale does it is all. We took a visit down, arrived down to see how they did theirs. Unfortunately, I could not attend. But it's something we're looking at. You know, we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint, and this is a, would go a long way in helping us do that. This leads me into recycling, as Joe asked me to touch base on this. You're looking, okay. As you said, probably a lot of, a lot of people in the village may not be aware. We do have a recycling center up on the Lane Gate Road, fifty-nine Lane Gate Road. It's easier if you go up, if you're going to get there to go up Route Nine, it's a lot closer to Route Nine side than the three oh one side. So it's open Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. We take all the recyclings, plastic, cardboard, handstand, metal, and glass and so forth like that. And we also take like refrigerators, which called white goods, right? Refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, anything that, ovens and so forth like that. And we also have a program that we extract the freon before they get, before they get recycled and scrapped. This is something we just implemented last year. Again, that's a reducing our carbon footprint. The, the freon is a very big factor of, of, of pollution in the air. So this is one thing that we've been doing. Because you know, you go, if you like, go to a scrap place, we don't know what, you know, what they do there. I mean, they're supposed to be doing that, but we know for a fact that we're doing it right here in Phillips Town. So again, any questions regarding that? They're there. Like I said, also, we're going, we're going to start e-waste hopefully in March. About two years ago, the county stopped our e-waste program countywide, so we haven't had any e-waste recycling in over two, three years now. So anyway, I'm in the process. We have, it's all set up. I'm just waiting for a new garage door to be placed on it. Our garage up there, and once that is in, in place, we'll be ready to take e-waste as well. We're going to do a six-month pilot program. We're going to do it for free. And if we get overwhelmed and we have a lot of it, then we may have to start looking at, at charging, because all the other municipalities do charge for e-waste at this particular time. Royal, Beacon, everybody does. So right now, we're going to start slow, and if it's, doesn't continue to be a lot, we'll keep free, but we have to, off to see. All right, now we have no vacancies on our boards. We just appointed Janice Hogan for the zoning board and Scott Silver for the conservation board. I mentioned this last month, that, that wall up there on Main Street looks great. Are they finished with that now?
They're paused right now during the coldest weather, although this is forty, and hope to be resuming late February, early March. It is it, the wall is stable right now. It is, it is mortared behind, but what needs to be done is the, the, the finish, the finish mortar between the stones.
Yeah. Anyway, they're, they're doing an excellent job. Yeah, I did read in the paper that they were taking time off because of the, you know, cold weather. And then, you know, with the mortar and stuff, you need to be sure it's not freezing, because that could freeze and crack it. It's not going to do you any good. So, again, thank you for your time this evening, and I appreciate letting me go first. Thank you.
Thank you. And does anyone have questions for Bob and follow up before he jumps off?
Just one quick question, Bob. The, the town recycling up on Lane Gate, they don't take like couches and furniture, right? I thought they did, and I made a comment last week in error.
No, we do not. We don't take, just any type of, like I said, metals, recycling, no couches or anything like that.
Okay.
That type is, but also too, to let you know, many years ago, I, when I first got on the board, I implemented a voucher program with Royal. So we have a certain amount we have each year that we have. So if let me wants to get rid of something big like that, you can go to the town hall, get a voucher for thirty dollars, and you get rid of, I think, five hundred pounds, whatever it is, but anything over thirty dollars the, the person's responsible for paying.
I have one more question. The recycling at the town hall, does that include, you said all sorts of plastic, so any number of plastic, or is it?
Any of the plastics that had the recycling logo on them, we take. That's, we don't want plastic bags and stuff like that. Okay, it's like, you know, canned soda bottles, stuff like that, milk bottles, all that type of stuff, they do take.
Okay.
I mean, you can probably sneak some stuff in there. I mean, that was really watching exactly what goes in here, but we're kind of on our system. We don't want like, not supposed to like, you're not supposed to throw garbage bags and stuff like that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. And then again, I need to drop off.
Have a good workshop.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, moving on to the financial report. Michelle is with us. She is, in addition to providing all sorts of support to this garbage transition, she is readying us to begin the budget process. So thank you for all that you're doing to make sure that the departments are ready and we are ready for the decisions that, that we need to make. Take it away.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with the, the first item would be, there's a list of parcels with unpaid village taxes. The process is that the board would approve the list. It goes to Putnam County, and then Putnam County reimburses us for whatever is owed, and then Putnam County handles the collection from there on after. Before these parcels went on this list, so everybody gets their tax bill in June, a notice goes in the paper. I send out a letter in January, the first week of January saying, hey, it's still unpaid. You have until the thirty-first to pay. We take postmark. Some people did pay. They responded to the letter. Other people did not. And so the list you have here, it's roughly forty-seven thousand in taxes and then an extra fifty-two hundred in penalties. It's, it's larger than it has been in the past, but the county will pay in full. I'm not sure, Jeff, if they need a motion or anything to send it off to the county?
Yes, we do. So I would make motion to accept this list and forward it on to Putnam County. Is it the office of taxation, Michelle?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
You, carry on, Michelle.
Actually, not taxation. It's probably real property tax.
Property.
Finance. Sorry about that.
We'll make sure it gets to the right spot.
We have a, a template with everything filled out to send it and where to go. So then after that, all the ten ninety-nines and W twos were mailed out to vendors, employees. Nine forty-one, New York State, federal, everything was done except the ACA forms. Have a couple more weeks, so I'm working on those. And then, as you said, with the budget. So between yesterday and Monday, I sent out worksheets to all the departments. And then we're going to start doing meetings with some trustees. I've been putting together a list that I'm going to send out in a day or two of which trustees, based on their work groups that were assigned at Reorg, who's going to be in the meeting and when we can schedule them with the department heads. Some of the smaller departments may only need a couple emails or a quick phone call, whereas, you know, highway police, water sewer, recreation, those are usually a little bit bigger meetings. And then, once we hear back from all the departments, we meet with them, you know, one-on-one with one or two trustees. Then I'll have, you know, like a preliminary budget to see where we are, and then that's where we're going to have to start making the big decisions on taxes, revenue, big wish items, spending, raises, the whole nine yards. I usually like to get everything from the department, so we have a starting place. And then we can move forward. Some of the stuff that's done concurrently, so while the department's working on their stuff, I'll be working on the electric, some of the revenue lines, things like that. So if anybody has any questions as we go through the budget process, feel free to reach out, phone call. Willing to do Zoom meetings, in-person meetings, whatever we need, so that everybody feels comfortable with all the lines. When we get into the in-depth meetings, I have plenty of worksheets if anyone's interested on where a lot of those numbers come from. I use trends, averages, contracts. I try not to just say, oh, hey, it was five thousand the past three years. It's going to be five thousand again. Sometimes it happens like that because it's a contract, but I really try to look at almost every line by line. So feel free to ask questions. I might even know them off the top of my head. So then, aside from the budget, if anybody doesn't have questions now, I know it's a lot, because we're just starting the process. The two big, or three big revenue sources outside of taxes. So ARPA, we got half of the money. And then the Treasury changed their ruling. So for smaller municipalities, under ten million dollars in funding, there's no more requirements. So it used to be that you could use it on broadband water sewer and, you know, healthcare. And now for the smaller municipalities, it's, NICOM uses the exact phrase, qualified expenses for traditional definition of government service.
What? Everything?
Wow.
Yes.
I mean, what a gift. I mean, we have plenty of infrastructure to deal with, but I'm just surprised that, that the restrictions were pulled that far back.
Yes. So there are a couple nuances. You can't use it for like certain debt and pension payments, but almost anything else. So you could use it for infrastructure. You can use it for, you know, if we had to do building repairs, anything small to large. We will have to do a report in April with some ideas of what we want to spend the money on it from a reporting standpoint. If you only choose, you know, two or three projects, it's a lot less in-depth. But we can choose as many projects as we want that fall under this category of a catch-all, if you will.
Michelle, can you remind the public the award to the village and, and how it is delivered?
So it's, it's roughly two hundred thousand. We received ninety-nine thousand and change. I don't know the exact amount off the top of my head. We received that already, and then next summer we'll receive the other half. So you receive the money upfront, and then you have until twenty twenty-four to obligate it and get it going with some projects. And then twenty twenty-six is when all the work has to absolutely be done. So you can spend it from any time from when it was, the March before it was awarded, so March of twenty twenty-two all the way to twenty twenty-six. That's your spending timeframe.
And do we have a sense of the format of the obligation report we're supposed to make? What, you know, when we, when we, when we make our public commitment for how we're spending those funds, what that report looks like?
So it should be coming out shortly. The Treasury has been doing things in phases. So some of the cities and the larger places that have received larger funding have different reporting requirements. Our first report isn't due until April. Other people have had reports already due. So they took care of those first. My understanding is that NICOM said that it's up, but they're still changing it, so I haven't gone in to look at it. But I will be to see exactly how detailed it has to be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, yeah, that would be due April thirtieth. Be here before we know it, but still enough time, you know, to do some planning and another workshop meeting. So then, the, the Build Back Better Plan, which is actually called the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So this money is different. ARPA was, here's your money, and then, you know, you have an allowance and then you can spend it. This money is going to be mostly competitive now in this IIJA. So it's going to focus on transportation, climate, energy, environment, and then broadband cyber stuff and other. And it's going to roll out in quarters. So they're going to open it in, if you will, like a grant-type application for the competitiveness. You're going to have to apply, meet requirements, and then they'll decide who gets the award. This is nationwide. Some, some sections have been allocated by state, so there's a pool specific to the state. But again, we saw how long it took the Treasury to figure out all the nuances of ARPA, and then they changed even a year later. So I don't expect to know much right now. I went through a lot of it, and some stuff still says end of quarter one, twenty twenty-two, where in February, nothing's open yet. And then I've seen stuff for quarter three, quarter four, so I'll check it periodically. But there's, there's not much that the village would qualify for, because a lot of it is for huge infrastructure, trains, bridges.
A dam, a dam.
I'm hoping that that's in there. They, they did make a mention of funding the Clean Water and Drinking Water Act that's already in place, increasing that funding. But that's something specific that I could look into.
Do you have a sense of who municipalities of our size are competing against? Are we competing against other the pop, communities with populations under X amount, or is it a free-for-all?
I did see some population requirements saying like two hundred and fifty thousand and above. I didn't see anything, which, so we're excluded from those, obviously. Those are big municipal cities. But I didn't look at all the, it's over ten pages of possible programs, so I skimmed it. But a lot of it, I think, is not going to apply to a village our size.
Well, we thought that about ARPA too, and we ended up with something, so let's keep our fingers crossed on that.
Oh, definitely. I would, I would make suggestions on which grants I think, or we can try and be competitive with once more information comes available.
Thank you.
And then the, the third option for grants would be the consolidated funding application. That should be released after the budget's released. So the budget has to be done, adopted by April first, usually in the state. And then after that, where they know where all their funding is going to be, then the programs and the grants start rolling out with deadlines and the dollar amounts there. The CFA was open, I think, in June, July of last year was the deadline that we worked on.
Yep. Three days' notice.
So I'm watching that more closely. And also, last year was an odd year because it was, it took a break with COVID. So now it should be back to a regular schedule. And then financial statements. I sent out general fund revenue expense, water and sewer revenue expense. Had some questions earlier, answer them via email. If anybody else has additional questions, feel free to reach out or ask me now if you're aware of them. Any?
How would you state the overall summary of where the village is right now after eight months? Is it eight months? Can I get in the dates?
Eight, eight months and nine days.
Sorry.
I think the village is doing well. There had been a few unexpected charges, but nothing large like the charger, but the insurance covered most of that. And then we have unexpected revenue from Sea Streak. So I think overall, we're in a pretty good place. I don't think we're over budget at all right now. I don't think we're totally under, under budget a lot, but I do think that there's some wiggle room for some projects, especially utilizing fund balance.
Great.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle.
Questions for, for Michelle? Have a good night. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Highway. I think Bugsy said he was trying to be on, but I don't see him. Is he with us?
I don't see him.
I don't see him.
So Highway has been taking care of storms and, and working with Royal, taking care of garbage. And maybe, Joe, you want to give us a little update of what, how you and Bugsy spent a chunk of your day yesterday, moving that process forward?
Sure. So Bugsy and I spent a few hours yesterday driving through the village, recreating the garbage and recycling route. So we went throughout the whole thing, and he kind of just verbally identified, you know, this gets picked up here, this person gets that, et cetera, et cetera. I took notes, and for all intensive purposes, I think we identified maybe ten or twelve quirky situations out of the seven hundred we have on the list. And those were those little strange ones that came up in some of the questions last week. So what I'm going to do is take that, cross-reference it with the bid documents, see where that all fits in, and then we'll probably address each of those on a one-by-one, case-by-case basis. But it was actually, it was pretty good to see the little nuances. And while we were there, he was pointing out some of the infrastructure issues as well. He likes to wave to the little kids who all think he's a superstar. But it was, it was a good worth of, good use of time.
I see we have Matt Krug, superintendent for water and wastewater with us. Hi, Matt.
Hello, how's it going?
All right, how are you?
Eh, not bad. Yeah, so it's pretty much same routine. The reservoirs are a little bit better than they were at this point last year, using less water than we were at this point last year, five point seven degrees. January laboratory sampling, we're found a good sanding. We did have a issue at the water plant that we're still trying to rectify, but we need to reattach the floating skimmer. The big change that I have is that there is a little bit of an update for the Badger Endpoint upgrades. It seems like they have shipped. I'll see when I get here. But yeah, so we're going to reach back out to Saks Metering to see about getting those installed.
Matt, for the sake of, of trustees who weren't around for last year's conversations, these are smart endpoints that allow the reading of our water meters remotely outside of, of the house. And when Michelle referred to the grant we applied for last year, she and I wrote a grant that we were sure we were going to get to cover the cost of installing those, and we did not. They had a huge, a huge number of municipalities request the funds, and others were deemed higher up the list than we were. So this made, this is one of the things we need to add to our consideration of capital projects so that we can get that smart technology in place.
Right. But yeah, needless to say, they are supposedly arriving soon, so we'll move forward with that. I believe the way that we last left off with it was contracting out an outfit that would help us install them just because we have a small workforce and couldn't do it, and especially now being down a guy, it's just totally out of the question for current state of affairs with that. So, but yeah, we could talk about that a little bit more tomorrow during the department head meeting, like you suggested earlier. But yeah, that was a big update that I have that wasn't in the report. Sewer side of things. Another equipment down, the Influen Auger failed. The motor and gearbox were starting to grind, so we're going to have to get JP Jager out there to take a look at it, see what could be done with that. And potentially move it away from the fence line. It would probably be better suited to a different part of the facility, but yeah, we'll have to see what they say first on the repair event and then talk about relocation.
But this is a, a large piece of equipment that, that is the initial grinders of the.
It's actually like a secondary debris removal system. You have the comminator, which is actually like the real ripping and tearing of anything that shouldn't be in there to break it down, so it doesn't damage anything at the plant. And then this actually kind of picks up those smaller pieces and removes them out. So I mean, it's a little bit extra manpower right now until we get that repaired.
But that's a process? They're coming?
I have to confirm a date with them. We had some other issues that were already scheduled that kind of prevented me from making that call, but yeah, it's on the list. Kind of skipped over the mission communications. That was on that the radios needed to be upgraded for all the locations except for Kemble, which was upgraded within the first. Within the first six months that I was with the village. So let's say two years ago. So that one is still in compliance and doesn't need to be upgraded, but Weston Market do as well as Lower Main Estuary. So, uh. I actually ordered those today. Hopefully we'll have them within about two weeks and they should be fairly simple to install and get the upgrades done. Uh, so now getting back to the rain, uh, logger, talked to Rainwise and we were able to get it working. Uh, he said if it does happen again, we will be able to get that replaced. Uh, we had the onsite with the, uh, enclosing of the lower generator building. Uh, we're going to meet up with, uh, Richard Che, uh, got to give him a call as well. That kind of escaped me today. Uh, and that's basically really all I have for, uh, January.
So to, to clarify, that's quite a lot for January, Matt.
Okay.
We are, uh, we are following up on the completion. There is a, there is a. A building that was not completed at Water and Wastewater and the equipment makes quite a lot of sound that is bothersome to neighbors. Um, the materials are there on the ground, but were never installed. Um, and so I am, um. Matt mentioned Richard. I, we've asked a number of contractors to come in and do bids. Um, so we can get a sense of project, uh, and what to do next, but it is, it is in process and part of that will also be. Some security, um, upgrades that need to happen down there with door repairs. So. That is moving forward for folks who've been concerned about that. And Matt, you, you sort of skipped quite lightly over. Um, having one less body, um, in Water and Wastewater, but it's created an opportunity for us to reclassify a laborer position. With, uh, requirements for additional licensing, a, a position seeking it, seeking, um, an employee with additional licensing so that we have. Another person on deck with more, um, professional capacity to. Take some of the weight off Matt. So, um, while it sounds initially like a loss, it's, it's actually a gain. It allows us to, to rethink. Structure a little bit. Um, and Matt, you had a, you had a notice on the second page of your report about caps, box cap, curb box caps and street valves?
Oh yeah. No, sorry. I didn't scroll down. I normally have a hard copy with me, but, uh. I had printers, yeah, had printers issues in the beginning of the week, so I was doing it digitally. So yes, uh. We are aware that there are quite a few street valve curb box capsules or that have gone missing over the years. Uh, we are doing the best we can to replace some curb box are a little bit easier. They make extensions for them. Uh, and they're fairly easy when they're in soil or sidewalks that are currently scheduled to get replaced. But the street caps are more of kind of like what we did at Paulding, uh, at the end of Paulding and Chestnut. When we had that, uh, valve leaking, we had it repaired and then put a new current stem and cap in there that's easily and more. Conveniently replaceable. Uh, so the ones that we are aware of, we've tried to fit other caps in there, but without a direct replacement, it's gonna. It's going to take a while to get to all of them because it is more intensive than just throwing a lid in there and calling it the day.
Okay, so folks have called, have been calling in, um, asking about repairs and Matt is on it, is the answer.
Yeah, I mean, email, phone calls, you guys can give us a list of, if you see them, I mean, but we do have the list that we're generating. It's just trying to get to them with the. Uh, shorter workforce that we have now.
Right. Any other questions from Matt? Okay, thank you for being with us. And we did get Matt a new printer.
Yes, we did.
That was, that was, that was dealt with at least.
Yes.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Okay, um, and we do not have a report tonight from the building department, the police department. Larry is, um. At a training activity tonight with his firehouse. He's a, a volunteer firefighter in North Highlands. He is there this evening, but we can report out a kind of a couple of things on his behalf. First, uh, we conducted interviews with, we, we are down a number of officers because we. Last year hired a number of young officers at the start of their career and. They have gotten themselves excellent full-time jobs and gone on to other things. We have a couple of folks out, um, with injuries and disability. And so we need to expand the for, expand the number of part-time officers available to pick up shifts. So we had two sets of interviews over the last two weeks. There were, I will tell you fantastic candidates. Um, they're, they're, uh. References are being checked now and I hope that we can make some exciting announcements very soon on that front. The, uh, ad hoc committee on community policing, policing, um, has been called together. Um, Ed, Ed Curley, the chair has found a date for our first meeting. I believe they said the twenty-sixth of. February, they'll be meeting and beginning the task of their first task of reviewing, um, the community survey. That we did last year. There's a lot of rich information there and they're going to start by mining that and making recommendations. Based on that. And, and I recall this an ad hoc committee because I see their work being, um, focused and tasked based, task based. With short timeframes of work. So they are getting to work. The one thing of concern on, um. Larry's report is the number of false alarms. Again, it is New York Presbyterian at the Butterfield site. With malfunctioning alarms, it is a real problem and we hope they will please. Deal with the alarms so that our officers are not spending their time dealing with false alarms. Okay, um.
Kathleen, quick question?
Yeah.
Is there a provision and what's the process for that? If you have a, a certain amount of false alarms that then there's a fine that kicks in after that fact? I know in my city where my business is, we have that after a certain amount, you start getting a fine.
Yes, and that, that, uh, was in process in the building department. I need to figure out where we are with that. That was underway. Jeff and I need to get a status report on that. Um, okay, so fire company, I see, Lillian, are you here to report for the fire company or just listening in?
Hi, everybody. Um, unfortunately I do not have the report in front of me. Um, I just hopped on because I wasn't sure if the President Leonard, uh, was going to hop on tonight or not.
Okay, well, I have his report here and I would, if, I would love to share the good news. There's something very exciting. This is a real shift. In this.
Be my guest.
Um, and the shift is that we were reporting consistently for months and months and months. That our company was receiving mutual aid. In this month's report, we are giving mutual aid to North Highlands. Um, and to Garrison, and that is a very promising sign for the health of the department and the, and the, the strength of new membership. In the department, um, there was mutual aid on chimney fires, uh, motor vehicle accidents on Route Nine, a car fire in Garrison. And another accident on four oh three. So it's been a lot of, it's been a lot of vehicular responses. Um, while we're in snow season, hopefully we're past most of the snow, but, um. President, uh, Leonard asked that we remind folks to please, um, after snowfall, remember to clear a three-foot radius around your fire hydrants. Near your home. Um, the village crew does eventually get there when they're done with roads. But we, we would ask for help from the public. If you know you have a fire hydrant in front of your. Um, home or your business, that you be the first one in line to, to pull the snow back. Okay, anything else, Lillian, or you're good?
Uh, well, that report that you just read is from Chief Jeff Phillips. That's not.
Uh, so yes, it is. You're right. From Jeff, from Chief, pardon me.
Right, that's the chief's report that he gives every month. Um, President Leonard, uh, had told me that he was going to be on this call tonight, but he's also out of town. So that's why I hopped on just in case of emergencies.
We're good. We got the message out from the chief and, um, and US Vice President, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, reported the justice court, justice court, um, clicks along. Uh, surcharge totals, revenue, um, revenue totals, five thousand four hundred and seventy-four. Um, there was court this afternoon. It was quite busy for the first time in a while now that we're moving out of. Um, we're moving out of the acute phase of COVID. People are coming back in for court. Historic District Review Board. There were two public hearings this month. One was my own home, um, which is getting a second bathroom. Um, and another, uh, a modification of a building on, um, High Street. Um, windows and the HDRB and the Rec Commission, Jeff will tell us a little more about how they have been working together to. Support an Eagle Scout. Project. So that's it from the Historic District Review Board. Planning Board, I see that Chair Goldstein is with us.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. The Planning Board has been, uh, involved in two issues in the month of January, the first being an application from. Butterfield Realty for a change of use in, uh, the building as yet unbuilt. Uh, identified on the site map as building one. And this was, this application was made in November of twenty twenty-one. And we have picked it up in January, um, to look at some of the issues attendant to it. Uh, to give you a little background, this building was previously approved in the, um. In the site plan that was approved in two thousand and fifteen by the trustees and it was at that point approved for. Certain number of square feet of office space and retail space and change of use that's been submitted to the planning board is to. Substitute, uh, six more residential, senior residential units. For the, uh, previously approved office space and to keep the retail space. Both uses, uh, the, the, um. The original plan approved, um, fifty-five units of residential housing. And to date, forty-nine condominiums have been built. Uh, these six additional units in building one would meet the approved. Quote, quota of residential units for the site. There is a difference in these units in that the applicant. Is interested in building rental apartments rather than condominiums. And we are looking at, uh, on the advice of council, whether that has any profound impact on, um. The original approvals or not. So, um, as part of my report, I provided you their list with. The set of issues that we're looking at, um, and that we will be taking up action again to tomorrow. So are there any questions? Yeah, great. Uh, the second issue that we've looked at is that, uh, the, I, the trustees referred to. The, uh, Planning Board at your December meeting, um, a revised, proposed revised map of the. Old Spring Historic District that has been underway for quite a long time. Uh, and, um, in keeping with the planning board's responsibility to approve maps, it was referred to us. Uh, for comment, um, at hour of. February workshop meeting, January workshop meeting, excuse me, the, uh, the Planning Board authorized me unanimously to express some concerns that. Um, I have about the nature of the formatting, um, and they're quite simple. Cold Spring has what is referred to as a local district. It's really a state district. That was established in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, subsequent to that, a national register historic district was also established in Cold Spring. The sponsor of that district, I believe, being C. McHudson at the time and. Uh, the boundaries of the two districts are not co-adjourned. The National Register District is much smaller than the, uh, local district. And is generally, uh, generally covers the main street corridor only. Under normal circumstances, national register designation is just an honorary, uh, that normally does not have any impact. Uh, on property owners, um, unless there is a federal action or that. A federal action, meaning either federal construction or federal licensing, um, or federal approval. In which case there is a review process, uh, called the Section one oh six review process in which the federal agency has to. Uh, assess the negative impact on the national registered district and, um. Generally resulting in a mitigation plan. To reduce or eliminate the negative impact. In the new map. Uh, the boundaries of the, for simplicity's sake, as I understand it, the boundaries of the national registered district have been removed. And so the map, which will eventually become a legal document in the code, uh, does not show. The existence of that district. Um, the properties within that district are identified in a kind of register. Small R of buildings. So an individual property owner, if they go into the system, will be able to see that they are in fact in two districts rather than one. But, um, I. From my background, I, I have a background of working at the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, which administers this. This, uh, processes mitigation process. I could not see, and I did do a fair amount of research, any public purpose. In removing those boundaries from the map, which is a legal map. Of the historic district districts in the village. And so, um, with the agreement of the other members of the planning board, I'm recommending that. The trustees ask that that boundary be replaced. In, in the map. Uh, it need to be nothing more than a dotted line, but I, I think for the public. In looking at. A village code and particularly in the land use sections of the village code, it's important that there be a consistency. Uh, in terms of the text of the code and the map of the code, because most people will go to the map first. And there could be instances where owning a piece of property within that district. Then the national registered district could have an impact on private property. Um, and that being the case, I strongly suggest that the trustees, uh, restore that boundary to the map.
I agree with that recommendation, Jack. Um, I think, I don't think that the intent, um. To, uh, had, had ever been to not identify, um, but it was an attempt to make, to make easier and understanding that all portions of the district. Uh, have the same design standards applied to them. That said, the, the, the. Arguments that you make related to federal actions. It's, and should, we should see on the map. What the boundaries of the national district are, and also we should feel proud, um, that we have a, a national district, um, in the village. And so I would agree. This job now falls to us as, as trustees, the, the. The HDRB has made its, this began as a mapping project of creating. A modern and up-to-date map of the historic district, the more accurately reflected the boundaries of the district. Taking old hand-drawn maps and making them a, a proper GIS-based map. So the process of adjusting the boundaries required a public hearing to let folks know what shifts were being made. There were no objections. Raised that I am aware of. Is that correct, Jeff?
Uh, no, there was only, I believe, only one, uh.
Question.
Comment and they were not, um, they weren't negative.
Right. So, so that public hearing, um, produced no, um, disagreement with the, 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 the proper mapping. Of the district and the, the modification of the lines based on proper GIS mapping. Um, and so it is up to us now to take that map. The map is not part of the code. It is filed separately in the village office. So that, so that modifying it, um, is easier to do. It doesn't require local law change. Um, but we do need to finalize the map, um, and work with, uh, the Putnam County GIS office to do that. So. A, a bunch of things coming together in one beautiful new map. Um, does anyone have, um, questions or concerns about that process? Um, the marking of the district, the proper marking of the district and the adoption of the boundaries? Okay, so Jeff, Jeff, Jack, thank you very much for, for weighing in. I, I appreciate the, um, hand-in-hand work of the two, of the two boards for a stronger outcome. So thank you for that. And Jeff, I guess, uh, Jeff, Jeff Clerk Jeff, um, will follow up with. will follow up with the G I S office.
I do, I do want for the record to say that I did have a conversation about this with the chairman of the H D R B before bringing this to you and so that I have tried to reach out to the interested parties in making my decision.
And, and I don't, I don't believe that there is any objection
Okay.
to marking based on, on follow-up conversation that I have. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Zoning board has had something of a winter holiday, no, no activity to report. Pre-advisory board as well, no activity to report. Rec commission, we have Chairman Amato with us.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thanks. Okay, so yeah, I'm not going to run through the whole report, but a couple of the highlights. There are a few proposed events for the village that we have not had a chance to review yet. Do you want to start by going through the list or would you rather review the applications?
Well, let's, why don't we get that out of the way so you can feel as if that is finished? The rec commission did take, I went through today and saw that they did make the, all of the changes that we recommended to the application forms for ticketed and non-ticketed events at Mayor's Park and in the proposed job description for an event coordinator, so that we can seek someone to fill that position. Does anyone have any additional concerns about those applications? Do we feel that they're in a condition to approve so that they can be used?
Um, I think Jeff did a great job with the team updating it and taking all our suggestions into consideration. So I have no other comment.
Thank you. So Jeff, this is a, this is a simple motion, second vote, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To accept?
Yeah, to accept the, the, the new applications.
And the job description, great. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now tell us how you're going to use the applications.
Okay.
Thank you so much for, for working through that. I think we ended up with a much better product.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. It, it actually benefited having it go through both sets of trustees, so it's good.
And if you can work with Jeff and with Michelle on getting this position posted, this opening posted.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to have that updated on the website. So there's a few a few organizations that have been anxiously awaiting the, the release of this new application. So it was sent to them as, as a draft. They're still looking to have events at, at Mayor's Park. The, these have not been reviewed formally by the recreation commission only as it, it draft states so far. So we'll review that at our meeting next week, both of these events. So just to kind of put them on the, tentatively put them on the calendar, or at least kind of earmark that. There's the hops on the Hudson event that they're, they're looking for the date of July sixteenth. Saturday, July sixteenth.
So no longer July second?
That's correct, yeah. They, they reconsidered after, after our conversation with them and the, the concerns of other events possible for the July fourth weekend, whether we have fireworks or, or not, and the the increased strain on the village for just tourists in general on that weekend. So the other event is the Putnam County Wine and Food Festival. And, and they're looking to have, and they had an event last year, they're looking to have a, an event on August sixth and seventh. So a Saturday, Sunday event. And yeah, so that's, so those are the two events that, that we'll be reviewing at this coming, next week, I should say, the, the next meeting. And I will send them the applications without the draft watermark on it so that they have them in case there's a delay, so that they can refill them out and, and we can have a, a formal application to review.
Right.
And I believe Mayor Foley, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the Putnam County Wine and Food Festival asked for a reduced rate to, for us to consider a reduced rate instead of three thousand dollars a day to two thousand dollars a day. Their justification was last year's rate was, was only a thousand dollars a day. So I believe it went to, to her.
Yes, Lauren, Lauren did contact me directly. But I told her that she needed first to go through the review of the rec commission and that these rates had been just established for a reason to to support the maintenance of and the protection of the fields so that we, we have, we can, we can support and, and improve the park. But also that the taxpayers shouldn't be offsetting costs for a port for-profit event. So she said she would be returning to the, she did not, did not hesitate, and she said she would be returning to the rec commission.
Okay, so those are the proposed events. We will review those and, and get back to you.
Great.
Any questions for, for those?
Yeah, I, I shot you an email a couple of days ago regarding having someone take a look at that basketball court.
Yes.
Uh, they're coming Monday at two o'clock. So I'm going to meet that person. If anybody from rec wants to come, that's great. If not, I'll summarize everything and I'll just shoot you an email of more talking points than anything. But at least get you guys started in the right direction of what is and what isn't possible there.
Okay, I can be there and I'll let the others know as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Um, so just moving down the list, a few other items, you had mentioned the, the shed clean out. So the, the last trustees had, they were handling that themselves. The, the rec commission offered to assist, but the, the items in the shed, there was various tractors, golf carts, miscellaneous items there. And so there was a, an auction, they auctioned off some of those items. Jeff may know Bugsy's not on, he probably would know better. But there's still a, a number of things remaining, some older Christmas decorations, possibly some additional tractors or parts of tractors, things like that. It was pretty full. So I, I don't know what was auctioned off and what wasn't, but I know that the shed was, was very full and, and I don't believe it's fully cleaned out at all.
So this, that, that work was, I believe, being done by Mayor Morandi. I don't know, I don't know the status, Jeff, what remains of what went to auction? And what was, is there, what is the, what has been happening and what remains to be done?
Okay, I can check with.
I meant, I'm sorry, Jeff, wrong, Jeff. Sorry, Jeff Adakovic, do you know what remains of? What was put to auction?
Now Bugsy would know best of what remains. I think there was fifteen or sixteen items that went up to auction.
Okay.
I think most of them sold, so.
Okay, so, so Jeff, you and Bugsy and I need to have a conversation because I don't know the sta, I don't know the status. If there's stuff that we need to get out of the way, we'll get out of the way.
Jeff B or Jeff A?
Jeff, Jeff A. You and Bugsy and I should
Okay.
get together, sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna call you, gonna call you buddy.
Sounds good. So yeah, so I, I think it'd be great to get that cleaned out. We could probably use it for, you know, for, for various things. You know, to, to clean up the, once we do clean up the park, some maintenance things there as well as potentially even some equipment for or events or leagues that we're going to be holding at, at Mayor's Park for residents.
Great.
Along those same lines, since we're talking about it, we, we did the commission did set out a survey last year in the middle of last year and asked village residents, I think we actually opened it up to outside to, to folks on residence as well. Or maybe we just, we sent it out via email and I think also Facebook or, but anyway, we did have a pretty good response and the results of that survey, it was essentially just asking what what residents would be interested in, what types of leagues, events down there, whether it be sporting or leisure type events. And, and all asked for suggestions. And so some of the results that we had from the survey, the primarily the most popular sports requesting leagues or, or showing interest for leagues with softball, basketball and volleyball, roughly thirty-six to thirty-two percent of the responses were in favor of some sort, sort of leagues for, for that, as well as even soccer, thirty percent, kickball, ultimate frisbee, flag football down to maybe twenty-three percent. So so those were the, the most popular events that we had offered. And so we're going to take that and, and start implementing. Now this doesn't, this isn't the full list from the results, so there's still some more that haven't been tallied yet, so we're working on that and, and I can update the results. But essentially, we wanted to utilize this list and to implement to see at least you know, which ones showed most interest to, to start with. And then try and, and start up some, some leagues. You know, either a, a day, a day a week or every couple of weeks or something to start. I think we had, we were working with, with the I think the village's insurance person to identify waivers that would need to be signed. I think that was where we had kind of left off. So, so Trevor's actually working on that. And once we get it taken care of, we'll be ready for, for the fall. We have some, some plans to renovate some areas of Mayor's Park and, and then, and then we can work on getting some of these leagues started up.
Great.
I guess, so on to the nine eleven memorial sign. We had met with the historic district review board last month to discuss preliminary and the preliminary designs, locations, we discussed materials. And, and so we got some really good feedback there. They were very helpful. Had some really good suggestions, so I think that went well. We are scheduled to formally submit our application at their next meeting, next Wednesday evening. So, so I've been working on the application. They waived the application fee. I might need some assistance from, from either Mayor Foley or or Jeff to, to help fill out some of the application. But some of the areas that need to be signed by you know, owners, things like that. So we'll have to figure out that since it's, since it's village property. It doesn't exactly apply. The application is meant, I think, more for private residents or areas that are owned by, by other. So that being said, I'll, I'll reach out to you in the next few days to, to try and help with that application finalizing. It's, I have it mostly completed though.
Okay. What is the role of the Eagle Scout in this project?
All right, so
This is usually what, what the scout does.
So yeah, so, well, we're definitely involving him. You know, he's very enthusiastic and we're, we're doing it with him. There was originally, he, I think, you know, and Owen Conversino, great kid. He had some, you know, great ideas, you know, they, they definitely helped. I think that at, at some point, we just kind of decided that rather than trying to put too much on him, I think we needed to to have some of this work done professionally so that the sign, you know, it has, has more professional look to it and it's gonna, it's, it's very, it's very I guess, unique, very, very difficult. Yeah, it's going to be made out of stainless steel. And the, the letters, the design is all going to be cut out of the steel. So to try and do that by hand is, it's difficult. It's impossible, really. So, so that's why, and after discussions with some of the town actually, highway department, some people there I know, some welders, they had recommended laser tech fabricators up on Route nine. And they, you know, they're, they're in Cold Spring, they've done similar designs. They do it digitally. So they'll take a, a digital image and then cut it in the steel digitally, so it's going to look you know, it'll look perfect. And, you know, it's a unique design, so it's going to be seen from both the, both directions. So coming northbound and southbound on, on ninety there on Morris Ave. And it, so, so really the so Owen's still going to be involved in the, he's been involved with the design, you know, pretty much for all the different steps I've been kind of coordinating with him. We're going to go there, I think, to laser tech when they, when they do cut the sign to create it and, and see the process, see the design and, and how it's implemented from, you know, from the computer to the, to the steel itself and, and cut. I was actually there for, for an hour or two last week to kind of fine-tune some of the design, some of the material, the, the finish, everything. And they're very helpful. And so, so Owen's going to absolutely be involved with the fundraising. That's something that the, actually, the historic review board actually offered to, to assist with and, and helping with that as well. So just setting up an account or, or something like that. And then, so he's going to help with the fundraising, he's helping with the design. And then we're going to install it together. He's going to, you know, he's going to be, you know, hands-on. We're going to take the sign from, you know, from the fabricators and we're going to be the ones that you know, dig the holes, mount the posts, mount the sign to the posts, all that, everything that's involved there. So so there's still a lot for, for him to do. It's still definitely a worthy Eagle Scout project. And I think that it's going to be, you know, a very professional sign that, that the village can be proud of, so.
I, I think this is a great concept and I, I love that this was, was Owen's concept and I'm glad it's going forward. I'm really pleased that people will be able to see that we have a memorial there which is sort of tucked back now quietly and now we'll be able to see it. I do have, and I would like to ask board members your thoughts on this. I, I do have concerns about village boards which are making determinations on applications being part of a fundraising process. I, I don't, I don't want us, our boards to be in a position where you know, an applicant who is given money toward a project is suddenly before you or before the H D R B with an application. And then there's that consideration. I, I would, I am proposing that perhaps it's more appropriate for for donations like we do for Community Day to come to the village and not through and not through solicitation by the boards. Do others have thoughts on that?
Um, what, what kind of money are we talking about for this?
Three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think approximately two thousand dollars.
Two?
Three, three.
Great. And has anything been raised thus far?
We have not reached out. We haven't, we haven't really done anything you know, other than just discuss what to do. And in terms of helping, I should say, when the H D R B they offered to help, it was more just, you know, context of who, how they set up accounts at the local bank or, you know, ideas, that, that sort of thing. They'd done it before. So they weren't actually helping to raise the money themselves. It was just more of just, I know who to call and who to set it up. I was concerned, you know, with, you know, if there's certain stipulations for fundraising for the village itself. Because, I mean, ultimately, I think the money, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess it could just come directly through Owen.
Or through, or through scouts perhaps. I mean, we do, you have Or through, or through scouts perhaps, I mean, we do, you have, we do have Irene, I, I see um, a senior member of, of. Um, Boy Scouts here with us, is this something that, that, that the scouts? Can help Owen with on that side with the fundraising piece?
Of course, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, that is part of uh, that and um, since it's an Eagle Scout project. Owen also will be doing, you know, his own, you know what I mean, like uh, private. From his family probably or from other organizations, but yes, the scouts will be involved in that.
Okay, I think it's clean, I think it's cleaner, Jeff, if the, this is my, my view, others can chime in, I think it's cleaner if the Boy Scouts. Handle um, financial aspects of the project, thoughts from other trustees?
I, I agree with that, I think um, it, it is not only a great learning process to do a fundraiser of this sort, but. I think, I think it's, yeah, part of their, their project, so.
Uh, yes, just to uh, confirm what Eliza uh, just said. The Eagle Scout is the one who comes up with the budget and. The funding, if you will, you know, and then obviously, um, because it has to do with uh, you know, the town or the town board. The Eagle Scout would present. That information and um, obviously, a Boy Scout leadership or, you know, one of the adult volunteers would also help. If needed, as an adult is needed in that situation, do you know what I mean, like facilitating that kind of communication or whatever.
I think what I'm referring to is that. Solicitation of funds and collections of funds, I think that should not be. Part of village function.
That's correct, yes, that's the scout, yeah.
We have a policy on fundraising in the village?
Not that I'm aware of, but it looks like it's the one we need to write.
When I, if I may, when I, I raised the money for the Christmas lights. Um, I had, that was because the village was purchasing the lights. All the donations were checks made out to the village and it went into the village uh, account. Not, not to a particular board, no, to the, you know, it's a line, it was a line item in the, in the budget because it was. Almost twenty thousand dollars, um, but you know, for something like this, I think it's. Not necessary to write checks to the village.
Yeah, he had actually mentioned trying to fundraise, you know, with a bake sale or something like that, I said, I, I honestly. I honestly don't think you would need to do that, it's just sending out a uh, an email asking, or a, a post on, on locals or something that. You're gonna probably get more than um, than enough funds. I, I don't know, I guess we can discuss potentially um, setting. You know, limits or goals, I guess, and and uh, whether it be a, a GoFundMe or 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 something, I don't know if. Um, the Boy Scouts utilize a certain. Uh, revenue stream or way, in a way to accept donations, maybe there's something there that uh, that we can utilize and. Works best.
We'll, we'll let you guys take that conversation offline, um, but. Uh, as a, I'm, I am a Girl Scout leader, I will say thank you for helping and mentoring this scout. As he gets toward his, his largest award, thank you.
Yeah, and he'll be on uh, he, he, he's scheduled to be on the call next week at, for the uh, H R B. Yeah, so, that'll be good.
He's welcome to come to Village Hall and, and help you put in whatever paperwork you need to put in.
Okay, I'll, I'll let him know, and this is just the uh, I don't know how well you can see it, but this is kind of the uh.
Oh, right on.
The design for what it's gonna look like.
Very nice, looks great.
Anything else from Rec or any questions for Rec?
Um, my only other item was, I just want to mention the um. The Housing Campus Master Plan Committee, um, there uh, I had offered to be a part of that as a. As kind of uh liaison through the village, um. And since we're involved with uh, kind of coordinating at, at a number of the fields, so.
Fantastic.
That's all I had.
That's great, thank you. Okay, um, the part of the legislators up next, uh, legislator Montgomery, I believe is in a Protective Services Committee tonight. Meeting tonight, so she's not able to join us, um. Chamber of Commerce, do we have anyone on, Jeff is with us. So Jeff's, Jeff's report came in. Quite late today, I don't know if, if, I realize it came just to me, um, so it has not been circulated to members, um. So if we could hit highlights, I think there's some things we're gonna need to talk through further, but. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for having me, and hello everybody, I'm afraid I have to start with a complaint tonight, which is that. There are clearly way too many chefs in Cold Spring.
Yes, I.
You guys could do something about that, it'd be helpful, we can sort things out, uh, no, so yeah, I have a pretty brief report tonight, um. So a couple of things to highlight that the uh, volunteers for the Cold Spring Visitor Center have compiled a list of. Uh, possible improvements um, to examine, and I won't go through all of them, they have to do a signage and. Restrooms and some other things, um, but hopefully, when we have our quarterly sit down, um, we can talk through some of those in more detail. Be great, uh, and the chamber has also launched uh. Sort of a, a pledge campaign to get local residents to review uh, local merchants online, just like. Type their name in Google and leave a review and we're encouraging our members to do that and hopefully other members of the community. Um, also working on updating the visitor map and are hopefully gonna be working with. Uh, the village on that as well, maybe coordinate some of the um, information about local businesses with. Information about local services. On the advocacy side, um, as I mentioned during my presentation a couple of weeks ago, uh, the five members of the advocacy committee and the ten members. Of the chamber board have unanimously endorsed. The New York Health Act and the resolution that's in front of the, the board. Uh, in support of that bill, and we're hoping that resolution gets taken up sometime soon. Uh, we're also continuing to work on the Share the Growth Putnam um, proposal. And other advocacy priorities, um, one that I have some bad news on, which is something we worked on last year. Was that we were trying to convince um, through the Manhattan or the uh, Metro North Railroad. To convince Zipcar to uh, open a station in Cold Spring and in Garrison. Both for residents, you know, who maybe, you know, don't wanna, wanna substitute that for getting a second car or maybe even the first car. But also for visitors who come up uh, and. Take the train and maybe can use a Zipcar to get to other parts of the county. Um, unfortunately, the, it looks like the, that program that, or that relationship between the, the railroad and the um. Zipcar are, is kind of eroding over time and Zipcar is removing. Cars from the stations and won't be opening up new ones, at least not in Cold Spring and Garrison. That's the latest I, I, I've gotten from them, so unfortunately, that probably won't work out. Um, other than that, we have a uh, breakfast meeting and uh, this is on Tuesday of this coming week, the fifteenth. At nine A M, uh, it'll be at Basque Bell House and Gardens, this, or you can join by Zoom. Uh, this is, you know, our first breakfast meeting of the year, and which is traditionally the one where we invite local. Um, officials to join and talk about what they do. Um, so you're all, of course, invited, uh, please come, and uh, there's a. A link to how to register for that event in the uh, report that I sent you earlier today. And that is it for the chamber, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. And I need our S P P, I plan to come next week, I don't know how you get breakfast by Zoom.
Get them, make your own in that point, in that case.
Okay, up next is report of the mayor and the board of trustees, um. We covered, we covered much of Joe's, Joe's, or anything else that you want to report on?
Um, just that I've been to the firehouse, uh, addressing some issues, uh, specifically in the basement. Uh, we had an inspection done, uh, that report was sent to the board and the fire department. And I followed up on someone to come out and give us some pricing on that today. So hopefully, uh, we'll have that visit in the next couple of days and then we'll have some real numbers to rectify the issue.
Great.
Other than that, um, at the advice of council, uh, village council, I was told that I'm supposed to recuse myself. From any conversations with the short-term rental. Uh, topic, uh, I'm one of the four permit holders. And uh, his advice was not to be involved in the voting or the public conversations as such. Uh, that I could potentially uh, better myself by participating in those decisions. Not that I would, but uh, that was his advice, so if I don't say anything during that piece, uh, that's the reason why.
Thank you, Joe. Um, trustee and, I'm sorry, Tweeps and Eliza, you had a comments on communications and technology, right?
Yes, please go ahead and start.
Sure, okay, um, so as a follow-up to uh, the presentation that we had from Managed Tech. Of New York who manages all of our um, tech services here in the village for the police, fire and for. The Village Hall, um, we had a meeting with them to go over more specifics about um. The details of, of what, for example, when we talk about doing cameras at the bandstand, what that would mean, how many cameras? How much does each camera cost, where it would be located, what um, infrastructure would be involved in putting up the cameras? Um, what uh, tech we would need on the backend in order to actually look at um, that video footage? Whether it's live footage, um, or. Um, footage that we would get and then would be able to look at after, um. This is kind of tech one-on-one for dummies, my version of what he was talking about, um, this is how I understood it, so. Um, so that was just one thing, so we're, I think, to kind of a bigger picture, the situation, um, there's a lot of. Tech um, infrastructure that has not been addressed, um, all of our servers are um. Way past warranty, um, the uh, redundancies that would take care of. If our servers were to fail tomorrow are also past um, warranty, so basically, if things were to fail, things would fail. Pretty dramatically across the board, um, so this is a really bad place to be, um, and there's. Well, there's no point in looking back now, we have to look forward, but we need to do these upgrades, um. Pretty much right away, I don't think we have a choice, um, we definitely need to prioritize um, our top. List for this current budget, um, and then for the next budget, um, I think there is some money, as I understood it from. What Michelle was saying in terms of uh, leftover money, infrastructure money, um, that could be used for technology, so I think, um, this is just. Needed big picture stuff for the village, for the fire company and for um, the police department to be able to run and run efficiently. As well as, you know, uh, the other piece of this is. Even with uh, mask mandates being dropped and potentially doing, um, going back into in-person meetings. I think we've all learned that there's great value in having um, a sort of mixed media event for our meeting, so that we can make sure that everyone has. Opportunity to actually participate, so um, we've been discussing and we'll get more detailed and Eliza will elaborate on this a little bit further too. Just the concept of having um, a sort of a, a big screen where people can both um, zoom in. But in this case, it would be Teams in, um, and I'm sorry to say that, but Teams in is what it is, um, uh. To participate in, in the meeting so that we can have both in-person and um, that kind of flexibility, I think that's, that should be our future. Moving forward, um, it should be an opportunity for everyone to engage in this democratic process, not just. Those who have the time on, on Wednesday evenings, um, so Eliza, if you wanna chime in with more specifics about our priorities.
Yeah, um, I think that was a, a pretty good summary, um. Uh, you know, Creeps touched on the servers that are, are really just at, it, it's time for the update to happen, so that's where we are. Um, the Village Hall has horrendous internet service, so we wanna upgrade the, the speed of that. Um, and in terms of surveillance and security, we're really just targeting areas in the village that have had um, multiple instances. Of vandalism and repeated vandalism, so that would be down at the bandstand, Mayor's Park and the bathrooms on Main Street. And we're looking at um, a couple of options that will give us uh, more surveillance coverage. So that we'll always have video to review if some, another incident happens and um, trying to figure out. What we can afford in terms of making it the most accessible to the police department and our um, emergency services. So we're, we're crunching the numbers on that to see what we can actually afford, but it will be improved there. Um, as Tweeps mentioned, the Microsoft Teams, it's gonna be something that'll also help all of the village board uh, members and the administration in the. Village Hall to work better and more cohesively and to keep better records. Um, through our working processes, which is really important as um, members step off boards or. New members step on to have that working record, so teams will really help with that and it'll also integrate our meeting systems as Tweeps mentioned, so. Um, allowing us to have in-person and video meetings simultaneously, which is. Oh, that is the future of government and it will really make a big difference in terms of um, how much our community can participate. And show up for this, um, we're also looking at a texting service that'll let us um, text out just. Emergency or, or changes in services such as, you know, snow um. Removal nights when cars can't be on the streets or a change in garbage deliver or pickup services, so um, we're, we're looking to get that. And um, there's just a couple of workstations in the village that are out of date and it's time to get. Um, we, you know, the village tends to sort of rotate and get a couple of new computers every few years to just make sure that. None of them are so old that they don't function anymore, um, so, and, and um. I will also mention that Catherine and I are looking at um, the Granicus Service. For um, S T R monitoring, but we haven't had a chance to really dig into that just yet.
Thanks, any other, any other trustee reports?
Oh, I, I didn't get into the short-term rental report.
But we'll cover that, we'll cover that under.
Yeah, I've been working on that and we'll, more on that shortly.
Um, we've covered a lot of the things that I'm working on already, um, but I, I am with. Joe is working on Firehouse, I am following up on the life safety inspections at water and wastewater, um, I did have um. A great first meeting with um, the owner of Forty Main Street regarding the parking agreement, um. Have some work to do on it, but I feel very encouraged coming out of that session, um, and we'll report as that goes forward. Um, and Michelle and I um, and Jeff are working on. Prioritizing capital projects, um, it's something that we'll all be part of, and I hope to bring some um. Some villager help in on, um, folks with, with expertise in areas to help us make sure we're hitting the right things first and thinking logically about. Order to approach capital projects. Um, on this note of Zoom, I'm just, we don't need to have this conversation tonight, just putting a pin in the fact that the mask mandate looks to be lifting tomorrow. Um, I don't know what is going to be changing about guidance on public meetings, um. Uh, so more to come, but we will soon need to have a conversation about. Um, meetings, whether they continue on Zoom, um, until we have other technology or whether we can meet in person again. I'd love to get a hybrid as soon as we can, so we cap our numbers up. Um, but more on that as we get guidance from, from the governor on that, okay. Um, item nineteen, we pulled, that was the garbage um. Resolution, the next is cleaning up um, paperwork, we, we, uh, the previous board um, entered. Agreed to enter a lease with the town of Phillips Town for a, a truck and sander through the winter, we have been using it. Um, the, it took the attorney some time to get with each other and get the paperwork done, so I'm asking for agreement tonight. Um, to be able to sign the lease, as Bob mentioned, the town board did approve supervisor to sign that on. Last Thursday, um, and the other is, was a product of that initial conversation about the truck, um. Creating a mutual aid agreement between us and the town, whether they need highway bodies or we need highway bodies, um. Being available to each other for mutual aid, so um, I am asking the trustees uh, permission and authorization to sign these. And we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign agreements with Phillips Town for snow removal and the use of the sander.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, thank you very much, I will stop at Town Hall on my way to Village Hall tomorrow. Okay. Um, item twenty-one is correspondence. We have received a request um, from a resident of Cedar Street, Mary Ann Rimi, asking for an exemption um, to chapter one hundred, the Short Term Rental Code, and specifically Section five C six, which relates to the um, period of time of ownership. Under the current code, um, three years residency, three years of ownership is required before one qualifies for a permit. Um, Ms. Rimi has, has, was one of the four applicants. Joe, there are actually three um, granted permits. You're one of them. Uh, Ms. Rimi was declined based um on the factor that she had, she's lived here for two years now, two and a half, that we're several months on. She was asking for uh, an exemption on that basis. Um, this, this request comes in at a time when we're having discussions with the village attorney around the manageability and forcibility and defensibility of the short-term rental law as it is written and as it was approved um, and accepted as local law. To date, as I've just mentioned, we have very low compliance um, for applicants, including Ms. Rimi and trustee Curdo. The law is cumbersome. It is beyond the capacity of our small staff to fully enforce. Um, and that means we're not meeting one of the primary goals of the law, which is to ensure the safety of rentals through inspection and permitting. Um, and after inspection, the Cold Spring Police are identified as the enforcement body for the code. Um, but many of the particulars that they are asked to enforce are within the realm of code enforcement and not within the realm of the police department. So they simply, they, they are not empowered to enforce um, those elements. So it's a lot to untangle. Um, none of this comes as any surprise to me or to the deputy mayor. Um, we both raised many of these concerns before the local law was adopted. Um, that we were, we were the two nay votes um, on the proposal. Um, so the village attorney is formulating a recommendation for the next steps um, that will allow us to revise and improve the law, and will soon put those steps before the public. And regardless of which path is followed, the deliberations, our deliberations will be public and transparent. A public hearing will have to be held, regardless of what option we choose. Um, and we'll need to seek review and input from the county planning department. And we will be engaging the public all along the way, um, as we develop a more consistent, manageable, and enforceable code. So at this time, I'm gonna recommend to the trustees that we deny Ms. Rimi's um, request for exemption, um, and instead work with the village attorney to prepare a more comprehensive public review of chapter one hundred. Any discussion?
I think that's probably the most sane and logical way to go, to to review and have an enforceable code. Uh, we're just trying to keep people safe and we don't wanna become a police village, so I think it's, you know, this is a kinder, gentler S T R approach.
Um, are folks in favor of that denial? May I have a, may I have a motion, I would ask, on on what I have put forward? So I will make the motion. I I make the motion to deny, to deny the the request for exemption.
Okay.
Second. I'll second, yeah, okay.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, so.
Can I just hop in? Um, you know, the main reason, we're not just denying Mary Ann, we're just saying that this law doesn't make sense as it is, and it's unenforceable. So um, to be working with it and making exemptions just doesn't make sense at this time.
More soon from the village attorney, um, and more soon from us. Okay, um, item twenty-two is approval of bills. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this batch?
Sure, I can do that. I uh, make a motion to approve Bill's Batch six, three, one, sorry, six, three, one, six, one, six, am I, did I add a number? Six, three, six, one, sorry, in the amount of one thousand three hundred and six hundred thousand dollars, four hundred, oh my God, I'm totally flubbing this. One thousand three hundred and thirty-six hundred dollars. Am I still flubbing this? Can you hear me? I don't know what's happening. I'm looking at the number, and I'm like transposing numbers, so something's happening here.
And I'm the one with the visual headache.
Sorry, I, it's so weird. I'm like, I can't read the number. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Nate. Go ahead, Joe.
Sorry about that.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the Bill's Batch number sixty-three, sixty-one in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents.
That's good.
All in favor?
I.
I.
We're not exactly motionless, but we're making a mess of the motions.
Okay, minutes. Let's get this done.
That's the problem. I said you're too darn smart. That's the problem.
Creeps in those numbers. Okay, so uh, first minutes is January nineteenth. Um, may I have a motion regarding those minutes, please?
Motion to accept the minutes of January nineteenth.
Second, someone?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, and the next is uh, January twenty-sixth. Trustee Thady and I were absent from that meeting, so someone else will have to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes uh, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
And the three of you?
I.
I.
Creeps, you, I, okay, and Catherine and I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, um, and now we're at public comment. Do we have any public left? We have Hillary Hart left, Shelley Gilbert, the current. Any public comment tonight?
Doesn't look like it.
All right then. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will second. All in favor?
I.
Bye. Good night, everybody.
Thanks.